Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, is the lobby clear? Thank you. We request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in the silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations of any of our meetings. I am pleased to welcome you to the August 22, 2023, school board meeting. The time is 6:03. And this meeting is called to order. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, pledge of allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include: one item under Board Office, one item under Executive Services, five items under Academic Services, one item under Business Services, two items under Human Resources, two items under Information Systems, six items under Operations, and five items under Good of the Order, Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Jordan?
I am ready to adopt the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you please record your vote? The motion carries, 7-0. As is the custom of the board, Ms. Langford Fleming will lead us in the invocation. Afterward, Ms. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, I come in prayer asking for wisdom and guidance when making decisions that affect our children, families, and staff of Lee County. I pray for wisdom for the board as well as our superintendent. I pray that you cover our children and staff with your blanket of safety in all places, protect our hallways, our lunchrooms and their cafeteria workers, our buses and their drivers, our fields and their athletes and coaches, our auditoriums and their artists. I pray that you watch over our law enforcement, our SROs, and those who have volunteered to keep our schools safe. Father, I pray for our teachers that no matter the subject, they will teach our students what they need to know that will help them become good and productive adults who are respectful and beneficial to our society. Father, thank you for allowing us to serve our community here in Lee County. Please watch over us all as we leave tonight. Keep us safe. Bless our entire county, bless our beautiful state, and God bless this great country. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Kors McIntosh, please address the item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on the meeting's agenda or any matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by the speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the superintendent or his staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of a public comment. The superintendent may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on the district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The school board's viewpoint is neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language, leveling against an individual or class of people are prohibited. Further, personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing are a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in those chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone by board policy and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes. If there are 20 speakers, two minutes if there are 30 speakers, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names, five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's directions when lining up. Mr. Chair, there are eight speakers. Which two address?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, this one.
Twenty-seven, sir.
Twenty-seven. There are 27 speakers. So that's going to be two minutes apiece. Okay, so we're going to start. I'm going to call the first five. Jamie Merchant. Yep.
I don't think she's on here tonight.
Of course. Is there anyone else that would like to speak and has not filled out a comment card? Comment card is our record after we can contact you afterwards.
I apologize. We have 24 speakers, and we will start with the first five I will call now. First, Mr. Smoking Joe, Mr. Todd Dusenberry, Jennifer Eddish, Dr. Paula Porter, and Yaphrem Defferam.
I am Smoking Joe. The district wants $2.6 billion over the next decade to build 16 schools. Another speculative cost of $423 million for remodeling and additions to eight other schools. $22.5 million to acquire land. You sure don't mind asking for money, but when it comes to your duties to protect public funds, you have been negligent and ignored your fiduciary duties. This board has refused to have a forensic audit conducted and have discouraged those who asked and blackballed whistleblowers, ignoring reports submitted to the district like the deposition of Al Oakes, which reiterated the corruption and thievery within this district. This, along with other complaints, fraudulent bills created were ignored. No one has ever been held accountable. So you sit back and let the statute of limitations wear out to acquit common amongst you woke politicians. Real conservatives are real tired of you phonies. Armour wants the position created for him by him to be the anointed one to communicate with the legislators. While he retains the position of liaison to the construction advisory committee and also the audit committee, value adjustment committee as well, this new position is a perfect place for him to lobby for the election of his son-in-law for the Board of County Commissioners. You spent $230 million on hurricane cleanup and repair, yet schools are still in poor condition. Let's start with the forensic audit of the hundreds of millions of dollars wasted in the name of hurricane damage. The only reason anyone would resist an audit this hard is if they are guilty or covering up for someone else. So tell us again, who doesn't want this audit? We need accountability for all of you. First time I can recall a school board endorsement for a candidate of other political positions. So much for the board being nonpartisan. All the Miller Rights proudly openly support for Armour's son-in-law. The Franklin Park demo was awarded to Armour's son-in-law's company. The fact that the board has publicly endorsed a vendor and the vendor is late to the chair is a conflict of interest.
Okay, my name is Todd Dusenberry. I've been a teacher for 20 years at Lee County School District, all of them at Cypress Lake High School. I've also coached for 20 years at least one sport, and in some years, as many as seven sports in a school year. I love my job, but love will not pay my bills. We have great admin at our school and do not have the coverage issues at Cypress Lake High School as there is all over the county right now. Coach's pay for bowling, I've been doing it 13 years. I started out $800, I'm now 810. Monthly bills have gone up over $9,000 for me for the last two years, and my pay has went up $3,000. This is not sustainable for me. I'm in my 20th year. I have to decide what I'm going to do next year. Am I going to be teaching here in Lee County? Am I going to give up teaching, or am I going to go to another state? Teachers work two to three jobs. Without the cover under the old agreement, which is about $30 a day, teachers must take work home, which interferes with their second job and family. Most teachers will have to cover because of the current teacher shortage. Where does the board stand on wages? As we would like to see teachers make a year, a real number. I've heard several times, teachers are underpaid and they deserve more money. What is the number? Broward County was looking at $100,000, and I've heard before from public, $60,000 a year to start. We need real numbers to make decisions for our following year. We don't even know what our contract is going to be until halfway through the school year. What is the cost to continue to recruit so many new teachers compared to paying your veteran teachers to stay? I've already heard of at least 15 teachers that have left in the first 10 days. How much money was spent trying to recruit them when we have veteran teachers that would save for a few more dollars? Teachers cannot pay their mortgage or rent. This was going on all summer long in our chat line. Weekly, teachers are leaving because of the cost of living and low teacher pay. We have teachers that cannot put food on the table and are looking for food banks. We talk about a world-class district, but we're paying low-class wages. By paying a low wage, your teacher retention will also pay for your coaches, as I've heard many times over the last 20 years, how important a role coaches play. But $10 over 13 years is not enough.
One moment, please. Clapping is not allowed. So please refrain. Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Eddish. I live on Packing House Road in Alva. I'm here to speak against the new proposed high schools going in there. There's no infrastructure to support it. You're going to have hundreds and hundreds of cars multiple times a day coming through neighborhoods that don't have the roads to support it. I think it's ill-advised, and with multiple high schools in Lee High and one in Riverview, you'd be better off expanding those instead of building a new one. Thank you.
As the next speaker comes up, we'd like to have Rosemary Mary Lippin McCoy, Dr. Shirley Chapman, Robert Daniels, Holly Schwartz, and Patchett Finkler.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Paula Porter. For many meetings now, I've heard the phrase "protecting parental rights", stressed by multiple speakers. As I am sure we all agree, including those of us in the purple group, parental rights are a fundamental aspect of family autonomy and is an extension of parents' responsibility for their children's well-being and development. Let me be specific. The practice of book challenges that is prohibiting books or materials available in our schools can have a significant impact on limiting any parent's ability to expose their children to a diverse range of ideas and perspectives of the parent's choosing. When books are challenged, banned, and removed from the schools, parents are deprived of the opportunity to decide whether their children should be exposed to challenging topics often found in these books. The Current Media Access Form claims it promotes and protects parental rights while simultaneously removing them. If challenged books are back on the shelves after a review, why shouldn't the parents be allowed with their own children to access it if that is their choice? While the board and others indicate their desire to protect students, the unspoken aspect of this practice is to take away the rights of parents to make choices for their own children. Think of a brick. When we can chip off a small piece of a brick and it's unlikely to be noticed. What is happening here is a chipping away of the parental choice for access for children. A small chip of parental rights is slightly removed under the guise of protection. I will be brutally honest. The Media Access Form as written is not protecting parents' rights. It is taking them away. The school board's rule should be to facilitate educational opportunities while respecting the boundaries of parental authority. Thank you.
I'd like to remind the audience, please, there's no clapping.
Here from Dervehanjin, Lee High Acres, Florida. I love my country, but I fear my government. My comments is, in the future, we're going to have a lot of enrollment in our schools. Our sales tax is going to be coming up. That's money for building schools, so we got a lot of things to look at here. Years ago, when I first come into these meetings, and that was a long time ago, we built schools from empty Walmart shot buildings. We got Sears and Roebuck's building at the mall, Edison Mall. We can use buildings like that for our new schools. So we got to look at where we're spending this money. I know this board and previous boards use the kids, tax the people, and don't worry about spending. It's always spending, spending, spending. You know, we went through Atkins 2020 deal for new schools. I don't know what happened to that. So our sales tax is coming up. So we got to look at being prudent on how we do things. Let's look at empty buildings, and let's watch out for our taxpayers. Last thing I got to say is, as an Armenian, I went to St. John's Orthodox Church and learned Armenian history. My Jewish friends went to their churches, synagogues, and learned Jewish history. Black history should be taught with American history. I see no extra reason to pay for that. Let them go to their churches like I went to my churches and learned Armenian history. So let's make equal...
Good evening. I am Rosemary Lippincott McCoy. I speak for myself, my family, my ancestors, and the future of my families. My great-grandparents came here after the Civil War as pioneers to a little spot that's called Alva and they thought was paradise. There were many little families who located there. They worked hard. Believe me, if you know what mosquitoes, you think what mosquitoes are today, you don't know what mosquitoes are. They grub the land. They till the land. We had the first schools. We had the first churches. We had the first library. We had the first bridge. And we had the first school. And the first school was built and completed by the local people in 1913, grades one through 12. Now, you people took away our high school 50-some-odd years ago. You didn't ask us. You just took it. Well, I'm telling you, we want our high school back. However, the place that you have chosen is wetlands and wildlife. And you have to four-lane two roads. Have you not considered this? All you have to do is change the location to Highway 80 between east of Joel, west of Charleston Park. It's high ground. No wetlands. Our wildlife is protected. And heavens, you can build on high ground. And when you enter Lee County from Hendry County, you're looking at a lovely school. And when you leave, you're looking at a lovely school. I ask you to take this into consideration because we don't have many wetlands left. And we certainly don't need the track.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Chapman. And I have a saying. I've had it for years. Over the 37 years that I was a teacher slash administrator in this school district. And that's anything worth doing is worth doing well. So I want to commend you for having hired Dr. Brineer. Because as far as I have noticed, and I have really been noticing, he seems to be a superintendent for all people. So I'm excited about that. We'll talk about that more later. The other thing I'm standing up here for is because we need a middle school in the Dunbar community. We need a middle school in the Dunbar community. It appears to me that we seem to be going back to almost neighborhood schools. And to tell you the truth, I really don't have a problem with that. But I graduated from Dunbar High School in 1964 prior to segregation. And I had excellent teachers, so it all depends on the teachers. But I just want to say to you, I want you to give it some serious thought because we need a middle school in the Dunbar community. Thank you so much.
Robert Daniels, hello once again. The time before last when I spoke here, we had a bit of a response coming from the board, to which it was said, message heard loud and clear. When I was listening to bargain yesterday, or bargaining session yesterday, I know all of you are highly intelligent people, so I must have failed to communicate my thoughts properly. So, I must have failed to communicate my thoughts properly. We're facing teacher shortages that is only going to get worse. We cannot in good faith advise our best students who have talent for teaching that we can see. They give their presentations to their peers. Their peers get it as good as if we explained it ourselves. Can I in good faith advise a child to go into debt for four years of college, to come out the other side, not only not able to pay their student loans, but not able to pay their mortgage, not able to pay for a decent used car, not able to keep a roof over their heads, let alone any chance of supporting children or a family moving ahead of them? When I was a young man, I decided I wanted to be a teacher. Not because I thought I was going to get rich, but I did thought I'd be able to live well. My grandfather, who mostly raised me, was dyslexic and hard of sight, almost blind. But he was able to support his family. However, he didn't learn how to read until I learned how to read because he left school at the age of eight with his teachers calling him stupid, dumb, and uneducable. I watched this man build a house with his own two hands down to the electrical wiring without assistance. He wasn't dumb, stupid, or uneducable. He just needed teachers. Around the same time I was a child, we also had a fellow who was a motivational speaker. You may have heard of Matt Foley. He talked about living in a van down by the river. That was the punishment if you screwed up. Right now, it's something no teacher can afford because we can't even afford the lot rent down by the beach.
As our next speaker approaches, I'd like to call the next five to get in line, please. Connie Dennis, Keisha Allen Thomas, Denise Eberle, Lou Navarro, and Gwen Gittens.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Finkler. I'm a resident of Alva who lives near the proposed high school and middle school. I'm against the building of the high school and middle school on Joel and Tuckahoe. While I was not in attendance for the August 16 workshop, I did listen to it with great interest. In the workshop, it was presented that there's a school desert in the East Zone. A map specifically shows the lack of schools in Lee High Acres and not in Alva. The demographic studies that this Board relies on for the growth projections, if they are accurate, then why is the proposed school in Alva acceptable? It would seem that this Board would want to locate a school within that school desert, which is in the heart of Lee High Acres. Or, as one of the previous speakers stated, they need a middle school down by them. The workshop was also an eye-opening for me as a taxpayer. New and existing construction projects are 202 million over budget. One project canceled with $5 million, no tangible benefit. Four projects delayed, and you want to spend 2.1 more billion dollars. My career is largely focused on IT project and portfolio management and IT capital planning. I'm no stranger to large and complex projects. Delays and overspending do occur from time to time. However, in business, projects are over budget by 202 million, then someone would be held accountable, projects canceled, and new spending delayed. I have many more comments that I emailed this Board. But I would just like to say in conclusion that I would recommend this Board explore alternative locations outside of the proposed Alva area. And I would encourage this Board to come and speak with us as we have a lot of differing opinions, but I've brought many of my neighbors. You will hear from them tonight. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Holly Schwartz. I am a resident of Alva. And I'm here today to support an alternative potentially to the NNN High School on Tuckahoe and Joel in Alva. First of all, I completely and totally support and appreciate the expertise that you all have. My father retired from the School Board, so all more power to you. And in another life, I worked for a county government and my blood pressure was immeasurable. So, I really do appreciate what you do. The concern, and I too watched the Capitol Workshop. I thought that was very helpful, lot of information that came out of that. But the one thing I think that the Chairman mentioned that was the most important was utilities. And perhaps when the property was purchased, maybe we thought that utilities would have already met that site. But it really isn't anywhere near it, and I think we're going to find that that's going to be a pretty great expense. The other concern I have is that that property is in a crucial wildlife corridor. The county has spent millions of dollars on assembling property all the way from Carter Road through Cakey Creek. And I know you've all seen the maps, but it's a really nice wildlife corridor in an area where we cannot replicate that in this county anymore. It just can't be done. So, I would hope that whatever decision is made, we consider that property as part of that wildlife corridor, which provides wildlife habitat, water filtration, flood mitigation, passive recreation for the entire county. I didn't think I would take this long, so I'll go. But I'm looking forward to working if whatever does go there to make sure that it is appropriate to the parcels to the south, which are conservation land. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Connie Dennis, and I am President of Alva Inc. I am speaking for myself. I want to thank you for allowing input from the community regarding School Board issues. I have heard the name Ruby Daniels mentioned several times. And I just wanted to share a little bit of information regarding Ruby. Ruby and I were members of the initial community committees for the Bonita Springs High School. We saw all the committee, how all the committees worked together to solve problems and explore new ideas for meeting the needs of Bonita Springs. The East Zone was to have the next high school. And Ruby was excited at the prospect of once again having a local high school in Alva. She had taught environmental science to many children and saw a need for teaching it at an advanced level. She even took her students to the Everglades camping. The idea of having a high school close to preservation land, she was really happy about that. With so much land available, she envisioned using it for experimental agriculture activities. She was very disappointed when Gateway was chosen for the new high school. And apparently, she was told by the administration at that time that Alva would be next. Ruby passed away almost two years ago. I don't know what her opinion would be today. The current plans are for a high school and then a middle school. The situation is a lot different now than it was when it was first explored in 2017. Less land available for teaching agriculture and land use, more people and more traffic. There appear to be a lot of problems that were not anticipated in 2017. I don't think we can confidently say...
Good evening, I'm Keisha Allen Thomas, the Youth Program Director at Quality Life Center. And my comments are concerning the transportation changes. So, I want to extend my warm greetings and appreciations to you all. I would like to begin my comments by expressing my sincere gratitude to those who have been responsive to the numerous emails that convey the sentiments of the community we proudly serve at Quality Life Center. It heartens me to know that our voices have been heard. I am particularly thankful to Dr. Bernier for returning my phone call and engaging in a productive conversation. It is reassuring to know that our concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. This gesture exemplifies a willingness to understand and address the concerns of the community, especially in these challenging times. We took it upon ourselves to encourage the parents associated with our center to attend tonight's meeting. The intention is to empower them, showing them that they possess a potent voice and the opportunity to actively participate in the democratic process, especially during times of change. It is not just about reacting when things deviate from their expectation. It's about consistently engaging and influencing decisions that shape a shared future. It is vital to acknowledge that this change has implications across various organizations. While our initial focus might be on how it impacts the families we serve, we should also contemplate how it could enhance the attendance and engagements of the students who faced severe disruptions last year. In our role as a community agency, I believe it's imperative for the Board to grasp the intricate dynamics of such changes. Communicating matters of this magnitude should not only be limited to School Board meetings, but should also extend to a community setting. I propose that the Board collaborates with organizations like Quality Life Centers to foster a more inclusive platform for discussing significant changes.
As the next speaker approaches, I'd like to call the next five. Sheridan Chester, Rocky Radger, Julian Ramirez, Marge Cox, and David Carter.
Good evening. Denise Eberle, Alva Inc. Director. I've submitted you heart signatures of the people of Alva and North Olga that are opposed to these schools. I represent them and myself. I have personally met and spoke with all of them. Alva is our lives. Alva has a rich history as the oldest settlement in Lee County. Its residents are dedicated to preserving the tranquility and beauty of Alva, a stewardship to wildlife and its environment, working to promote the rural character of natural resources and agricultural lands. These massive compounds of schools within a very environmentally sensitive area is not in any way compatible with our community, no matter what the curriculum may be. These are urban schools, not small country schools. The continued use of the narrative that Alva once had a high school is obsolete. There's nothing romantic about these schools. Build within Lee High, which is urban. Following these schools would come developments and therefore destroy our rural communities. They would be no more. There are many significant issues connected to the properties opposed, to the proposed property. They will have significant additional costs. It is right in the middle of 2020 Preserve Wildlife Corridor to the east, west, and south. Basically, that whole area is pretty much a wildlife corridor. The southern portion is connected to the school property divided by simple wooden wire post fence. The scrub jay prefers many endangered and protected wildlife traverse the proposed property and our properties, panther, black bear, gopher, tortoise. They cross Joel Boulevard and Tuckahoe Roads. They come over to Badman Creek for water. We personally observe them. The people of Lee County had paid millions to protect and preserve their wildlife and conservation lands. This portion of Alva is rich with wildlife. Traffic lights, noise, thousands of students and staff buses, construction dump trucks. For years it takes to build these schools will devastate this area and Alva.
Good evening, Superintendent Board Lou Navar, retired teacher, CAC member. I'm asking the Superintendent and the Board to revamp its discriminatory policy of not allowing visual aids here at Citizens Input Time. It's a violation of the First Amendment. Two, I'm asking the Board to again reconsider with the Calendar Committee to make Veterans Day a holiday and not a Hurricane Make-Up Day. How can the Board portray to the students and everyone else patriotism when we had to make Veterans Day a Hurricane Make-Up Day because we had to do 21st century politically correct things? Dismal reading scores again, 46% on the FAST test. Now, let's not blame that it's new. FCAT, FSA, FAST, same old, same old. You're dragging your feet on my 60,000 starting pay with full longevity increases. Teacher shortages. Why teach when the School Board makes what the starting teacher makes today? Why teach when administrators are knocking down six figures here downtown and some are tripledippers.org? Check it out. Why teach when principals and assistants start around 78K and the principals are doing better than that? Why teach when the union president makes 78K a year and the executive director six figures? Why sub for 15 bucks an hour and no benefits? Women's parity, no teachers, no nurses. They're all gone the way of the Roman Catholic, none, none. Why are you talking about schools and this, that, and the other? The kids are failing. They can't even hit 50% literacy.
Good evening, Gwen Gittens. Good evening, everyone. The first thing I wanted to say is to the public. A lot of the things that we talk about in this district and that the Board talks about cannot be decided here. They're decided in Tallahassee with the Florida School Board Association, Florida Board, the DOE Board. They will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock in Collier County. And you should go if you can to get some questions answered. The other thing is, there's an HB1 survey that parents call me about. They received it on Sunday night and tried to complete it and they couldn't. As soon as they tried to complete it, it went away. And the questions are, what was it for? Can they access it and where were the results? This afternoon and for several days, you've talked about moving to one meeting per month, and you're meeting with the Superintendent. My question is, when do you intend to listen to us, to all of us? Because we have three minutes once a month. That takes it down, I mean, twice a month now, that takes it down to three once a month. When do you hear our voices? When I sat on the Board, the reason that I asked a lot of questions was for the sake of the public so that they understood some of the difficult things that we were covering. It wasn't because I didn't do my homework. If you decide to do one meeting a month and you're meeting privately with the Superintendent where you get your questions answered, but we have no idea what those questions are or those answers. If you decide to do that, you should also add a monthly district-specific town hall that you hold every month, whether there's one person, two people, or 50 people, that it is a standing meeting in each district.
Good evening, I'm Sheridan Chester, and the President of the Substitute Teachers Association for Lee County. And I've been a teacher for 23 years. We don't do this for any other reason other than we love the children and want to make sure that there's a continuing of education in the absence of a full-time teacher. I was going to talk about something else, but I heard today, and it could be wrong, so I wanted it clarified, that there was a policy might be instated where you would be piggybacking off of Collier County, using their staffing services to hire subs. I'd heard something before about people using Kelly Services the same way. And you're talking about paying something like, then, it was like $45 an hour per teacher, when all we're asking for is $19 to start. Why would you go through that kind of trouble when that's all we're asking for? And you're throwing away the best of the best of the teachers that care about these children and what's happening to their future. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Marge Cox, I live in Bonita Springs. I'm a retired educator. And I come again to say I appreciate the work you do. I know it's hours of your time and energy. And I appreciate what I've seen out of the Curriculum Committee this year as I've attended those meetings as well. So, I was disheartened when the work that the Curriculum Committee did was basically disregarded. And I hope that you'll take another look at that and give the plan that they put in place. place another opportunity to be heard and discussed and accepted. They've worked hard. I appreciate their work, as I appreciate your work. Lee County schools deserve the best we can give to them, and our students deserve all we can do for them. And I just want us to keep in mind that it's, we're all here because we care about students. Let's remember to put them and their needs first. Thank you.
As the next speaker approaches, I'd like to call the next five speakers to get in line, please, starting with Jessie Smith, Ward Dickinson, Madeline Stewart, Dr. Samuel Stewart, and Danaj Powers.
Good evening. My name's Rocky Rager. I live on Tuckahoe Road in Alva. And I'd like to say that me, my wife, my kids, and our cattle oppose the school being built on Tuckahoe. Thank you.
My name is Julian Ramirez. I'm the Youth Programs Coordinator at the Quality Life Center. I'd like to make a comment regarding the transportation changes. As many of you already know, the Quality Life Center has been offering services in the Dunbar Community for over 30 years. We see ourselves as a partner with the public school system, an extension of what you do. We're servicing the same families and children. The recent decision that has been made has had a negative impact on our community, and we want to make sure that we can communicate the impact that it's having so that you can make a more informed decision as you move forward. We provide academic enrichment programs that supplement what's happening at the school system. We're seeing increases in gains in the academic program that we're having internal. We have certified teachers that have been previous employees of the school district that are providing services to our young people in small, in small, in small groups and also one-on-one for wellness services. So we're doing academic enrichment. We're doing wellness services. And with everything going on in the world post-COVID, post-Ian, you know how important mental health is. This is having a negative impact on our families. Our families are already struggling with different situations. This is only adding to it. We're having to freeze enrollment until we can actually fulfill the need of all the young people that we're serving. We can serve more young people than we're serving right now, and this change is affecting the quality of the program that we can provide. Lastly, we want to be an institution. We want to be here 100 years from now. But just like you, we depend on public funding. The parents that bring, the parents that we serve, the tuition alone doesn't cover the expenses of the programs that we offer. So we need to be able to figure out how we can work together so that we can serve our young people so they can realize their fullest potential. Thank you.
I'm Madeline Stewart. Thank you for letting me speak to you. I'm here to talk about trust. The Purple Group was formed to voice our trust in and our support for the teachers and other professionals in the district. Now, we are very concerned about an unnecessary media access form that actually restricts parents' rights to allow their students free access to all educational materials available in the library. Because it was rushed through, there was a "technical glitch," leaving parents confused and misled if they signed on their phones. Why do we even have such a form? The law does not require a media access form. Only a handful of the 67 districts in Florida even have such a form. The default for the majority of districts is the right for all students to have free access to all available educational media. If individual parents want to restrict their own students' access, that is their right, and then they can complete a form. We ask you to retire the current form. We ask the professional staff to go back to the drawing board and create a simple form that protects the rights of all parents and students for access to books. And finally, we're very concerned about the morale of classroom teachers as they begin a new year with the so-called culture wars still raging. We ask you to protect the teachers from those culture warriors who are ferociously attacking them on all sides. Now is the time-
I'm David Carter. I live Alva, here opposing the high school and the middle school. I was here last meeting. Everybody for me said pretty much what needs to be said, but I want to recap on it a little bit. The infrastructure is not there. Your nearest city water sewer is probably two miles. How much is it going to cost to run that? To put in a water plant and sewer plant? How much more extra cost is that going to cost us? And to recap from the last time I was speaking, how many of our wells are going to go dry when y'all put that in to be able to feed two schools of that size? You know, we had a meeting, somebody was talking about years back. All this was brought up then. And that was back before Frank Mann passed away and Ruby Daniels passed away and all. In all these years, nobody's ever answered these questions. And then y'all wonder why we're so much aggravated with this situation. We get no answers out of this. The school does not belong there. The property is full of endangered wildlife over there. It's like I said last time, I appreciate y'all listening. Come out there about six o'clock in the morning, sit on my porch way, have a cup of coffee, and you can watch the traffic. Go out there in the afternoons and walk around that property and see what's in there. Thank y'all.
My name is Jessie Smith, and I've worked in the district for 11 years, all at Gateway Elementary. I wanted to share my story and that of others at my school. My significant other and I both work for the district. We do not have any dependents, and I cannot imagine the financial strain a dependent or two would bring to our lives. We share a car and don't even make enough money to pay for our mortgage and get another car loan. We all deserve more money and for food, housing, and cars. We don't make enough to survive here in Fort Myers. We don't want to leave, but it's almost impossible to stay on the salaries we have, especially when we could go a little north or a little south and make a little bit more. We also have no subs. There are classes being combined daily at my school and many others across the district. We have no teachers. The teachers are covering for other classes that have no teachers, and they're being paid almost nothing. Teachers have already walked out this year, and the district can't even get people to sign up for a job fair. We keep being tasked with more work, have more students showing up every single day. We are fed up. We deserve more. We will quit, myself included, and there will be no one to take our places. Teaching is all many have ever wanted to do. But if we can't survive, we can't teach here. This is ridiculous.
As our next speaker approaches, I'd like to call the next five to get in line, please, starting with Debbie Lee Columbo-Powers, Carolyn Edison, Priscilla Edwards, Lucas Rogers, Angelique Vasquez.
My name is Dr. Samuel Stewart, and I love my country. I love the public schools. And I know you have hard work and listen, have to listen to a lot of people, but I just wanted to share you a minute of thought. Public schools were created to be nonpartisan, so that we could protect students and children from political warfare. So teachers and students could have the sanctity to create a positive learning environment so people like a poor boy from Middle Tennessee could go to school, get an education, earn a degree, earn enough money to live in Fort Myers. But anyway, please, the public schools built the greatest country in the world. And I just want to remind you that Hitler once bet that his Nazi-trained soldiers would defeat those public school folks from America. He lost that bet. They returned, and we built the greatest country in this world. We built it together, all kinds of people. And we need to reach out and remember that and keep the political wars away from the children and respect the teachers. Teaching is hard work. That's why a teacher once told me, you know, if we didn't have weekends, we wouldn't have teachers going on. It is hard work. Try it for a few hours. Teachers need the respect and support of parents and administrators and board members to protect them, not to put them in a situation where they're going to be fined for having a book in the classroom, not for, and creating an environment where they're keeping books out of the classroom so they won't have a problem. Anyway, I'll give you eight seconds back. Thank you.
My name's Ward Dickinson. I live on Styles Road in Alva. I'm opposed to the proposed school there on Tuckahoe and Joel Boulevard. As previously said, there's no existing infrastructure. Our roads, the traffic is just, it's getting worse and worse every day. It's more and more crowded. I think Alva's population right now is around 3,000 versus Lehigh, which is around 122,000. So to put a school in the middle of Alva for 3,000 people, I mean, to serve that community, I think that's, that doesn't make sense to me. The additional traffic, you know, busing students from Lehigh all the way out there, again exposes your students in the buses and in the cars to risk. Again, it clogs the roads out there, which are, again, already, it's just, it's impossible, hardly, it's just barely, barely possible in the morning to get to where you need to go because 80, Joel Boulevard is just, is just jammed. Again, the busing would waste fuel and just, it's, just, again exposes everybody, the children and other people, to unnecessary risk. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. Hi. Good evening. I'm Dan Powers, and I live on Tuckahoe Road, just on the east side, along the canal, across from the proposed high school. I'm just going to do some points on an email I sent to each one of you. Myself, we're against the school in that location, as well as almost all my neighbors are. This site's a bad choice for a variety of reasons. You've already heard a few of them. Joel Lane is two-lane through that preserve area, and I don't feel all that additional traffic works well with that. It's located next to the 2020 preserves. All the noise and light pollution there is not conducive to the wildlife in those areas. There's just about every species of animals you can imagine on there: bobcats, gopher tortoises, scrub jays, occasional panthers, bears, fox squirrels, et cetera. The local streets, such as Styles and Packing House, just cannot handle any additional traffic. A school bus and a car can't even pass on those roads. I routinely get run off just trying to go and do my neighborhood errands. The proposed school would also be upstream from a community that was already been decimated by flooding after Irma, many houses down there destroyed, mine barely missed getting flooded. Raising the land for the school and draining it into that canal would only lead to more serious flooding. The existing canals can't even handle the water now. My own home would probably get flooded. I think a good solution, as others have said, might be to relocate this proposed school to a site more appropriate. I was involved in the petition drive last time, about seven or eight years ago, and overwhelmingly, the people in that-
Thank you for taking my question. I am an educator of 35 years. I'm from Fort Myers. My name is Karen Edison. I have a big concern about the chipping away of public schools when Lee County offers so many educational options in private and charter and Christian schools. Why are we going after public schools and limiting their books, limiting the curriculum, when a public school is to prepare our children to live in public life, where there is diversity, where there is inclusion elsewhere? How are they going to understand other people if they do not learn about other people? And yes, there are churches, we heard about them, that can teach, but not every child can or does go to church. And we cannot rely on the quality of that education and the impartiality of that education. So we rely on the public schools to not chip away at public education, diversity, and inclusion. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Lee Powers. I live on Alva, in Alva, on Tuckahoe Road, east side. You guys want to put the school on the west side. Mr. Carter just spoke. My husband just spoke. Mrs. Lippincott just spoke, all from Alva. Where Mr. Carter, my husband and I live, on Tuckahoe. David Carter lives right on the edge of Joel and Tuckahoe East. Like he mentioned, that traffic is just all screwed up. That's not a nasty, I'm sorry, that's not a bad language, I'm sorry. But yeah, you know, really, I'm not here for statistics. I don't give a dang about statistics. What I care about, we moved there 23 years ago. Let me paint you a picture of our road. It's a two-mile-long, one-lane, dead-end road. It's covered with ancient, old live oak trees. People have farms, they have cattle, they have horses. We have a horse stable there. People have chickens. On our five acres, there's over 100 trees there. Let me tell you quickly, when I was in junior high school and high school, I was a percussionist. I played drums, very good at it, very loud, too. I know what marching band is. I was in marching band. We don't have any streetlights on our, on our road. We don't want any streetlights. We don't want sound there. When I go out the edge of my five acres at night and I look up in the stars, I can see stars. I can see meteors, not school lights that are going to be there all dang time on, not the football team, not the baseball team, not the band. Again, as other people have said, you're going to encroach on generational property there, on Styles and Packing House. We don't need a school here. Put it in Lehigh. We're the last rural area of Lee County. That's why we all moved there, guys. We expect to move to drive 15 miles away to Lehigh, to La Belle, to Tyus. That's how we like it. I was here years ago when we fought this. I said pretty much the same dang thing. Please, listen to us. We don't want to be citified. No school needs to be there. Please find another location. We are the last-
As the next speaker approaches, I'd like to call the next speakers, starting with Breanna Jenkins, Danajic McClutcheon, Amanda Codon, and Velina Sherman.
My name is Priscilla Edwards, and I'm a parent of Lee County, as well as a new parent of the Quality of Life Center. And as a mother who needs to leave for work by seven, by 6:45 every morning, the bell for school does not ring until 7:25 a.m. Work does not end until 5:30, but the kids need to be out of school at 2:10 and on to their next destination. I would like to know in whose favor the transportation changes are made for, for the children of Lee County this year. Having a daycare but not being able to commute, having to change daycares, be at risk of losing childcare services, getting to work an hour late every day, and leaving to work early an hour every day, I don't believe that the transportation changes were made in the best interest of the parents or the students. I don't understand the- I don't understand the convenience of having a daycare service that the children cannot get to and from them, and if the parents were able to transport their own children, there wouldn't be daycares. A lot of children have been left without transportation with the decision to cut before and after care services with daycares this year, and thank you for your time.
My name, my name is Lucas Rogers, and in my short time on this earth, I have seen many things, but never ever seen anything like, in my own school, teachers and librarians needing to wrap up bookshelves in order for legal action to not be taken. And the school board shouldn't choose what I can or can't read, what anyone can or can't read. Thank you for your time.
I'm a parent of the previous student in Cape Coral, and I'm here to talk about the access or lack of access to books in school. This district's mission is to be a world-class school system, and it really like begs the question, how are we going to do that with less access to literacy, with teachers not having freedom to teach and engage students? There's a very small window of time in a child's life where you can really inspire them to be curious and to find out that there is something, it may not be something that a lot of people are interested in, but something that will capture their interest, that they could work at, they can improve, and they can see rewards from. And that's what books help kids discover. They can explore different things in a, in a safe way, in an age-appropriate way. And never in the public school history of myself as a student and as a parent have I ever come across the notion that books are a danger, that literacy is a detriment. We have the reading festival here every year. We have AR because we know that books encourage kids to be better students. And now, all of a sudden, we're doing this 180 and taking away one of the best, if not the best, tools that kids and teachers have. When I speak to parents that are peers, even have younger kids that are not in the school system, all we are thinking about is, are we staying and are we going? Are our kids going to be prepared to college? When is that time? I'm running out of time. I got seven years, and then he's going to be applying to schools. We are looking to take our education, take our careers, take our roots, our, our homes, everything, because we cannot rely on our students to be educated in this state, in this school district, and I believe that's what you guys are supposed to be ensuring.
Hi, my name is Breanya Jenkins, and I would like to speak on the cuts of after-school buses. As we know, it is extremely dangerous for our children to be left unattended. At this time, they don't have enough teachers or subs. I want to know where exactly did they get the staff to man the after-school programs that cannot accommodate every child at the schools? My daughter has been attending Quality Life Center since she was three years old, and she is now 11. She is in danger because she gets off of the bus at 4:45 to walk home alone, not to mention that I have to get home from work and have another child to pick up at another location, then rush home to meet her. The buses being cut has caused a severe safety issue for all children affected, and I ask that you reconsider reinstating these buses. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ladondra McCutcheon, and I'm here about the buses and the school teachers. They are, my belief is that, is that they need to be paid a little more. You will maybe have more school bus drivers, more teachers, you know. I don't know if y'all have ever been on the school bus before, but you know how hard-headed children are. We all have been a child before, and you know the children give the bus drivers a lot, and they have to put up with a lot. The school teachers are in there with the hard-headed children, I mean, they have to put up with a lot, you know, and that's something they should get paid a lot more for. Now imagine, just imagine, y'all don't get y'all paycheck for June, July, August, you know, where, where it's going to happen then. So I think that y'all really do need to help the bus drivers and the, and the school teachers out a great deal. You know, this, this is, this is really crazy how they don't have this income for the people. But thank y'all, y'all have yourselves a good day.
My name is Betty Ann Sherman. The current obstacle to freedom in our school system is the ability for any parent to opt out of allowing their child to borrow a library book while removing the ability to allow other children to have access to that very same selection. Obviously, no two people see things exactly the same way. A book that one parent sees as valuable, helpful, informative for their child may be seen as unhealthy, of little worth, and perhaps even vile or morally bad to another parent. It is clear to many of us, the passage of many laws recently all limit classes, that have limited class instruction, and they have left teachers and media specialists scared and confused. As of July 1st, HB 1069, for example, limits K through 12 classroom instruction on reproductive health, most notably barring teaching of human sexuality until eighth grade and other subjects, including menstruation before sixth grade. With puberty commencing approximately three months earlier each decade since the 70s, it can be normal for puberty to begin at age seven or eight, and the need for a child to have an interest in taking a book out on this subject, if it has not been challenged or removed from the shelves in her school library. Menstruation is a normal bodily function that affects both girls and boys. Data from Maryland Coalition Coalition Against Sexual Assault shows that a lack of comprehensive sex education is linked directly to higher rates of sexual violence, and if taught, can reduce the rates of sexually transmitted infections and promote healthy relationships. Why are some folks concerned about the ease of being able to challenge books and keep them from all students? The worst-case scenario, so many books offend so many that the mere existence of libraries in our schools becomes too threatening or difficult to manage, and they are closed. So far in Florida, over 600 books have been challenged and removed. Many are written by people of color. Many were read over the years by you and me and our children and millions of...
Thank you.
Amanda Cochran. Thank you, guys, all of you. I don't envy your job. I know that there are hard and important decisions to make, and you guys have heard a lot this evening. I am a concerned Alva resident. I echo the comments of many of my fellow Alva and northern East Lee High Acres residents for the same reasons that they've already more than adequately articulated. I am supportive of constructing schools in areas where they are most needed. We ask that you follow where the student population numbers lead as it pertains to current residents who can support it through attendance and not disturb precious land rich in wildlife and in areas surrounded by rural and conservation land. Current infrastructure, as Penn echoed tonight over and over, does not support this proposal. In regard to the issue of traffic, with all due respect, Lee County is well-known for its history of putting the cart before the horse. Just this morning, on my way into work, there were two large construction trucks that had collided into each other and flipped over completely because of a high traffic on a two-lane highway with way more daily traffic than we have adequate roads for. On the roads surrounding the area where this is being proposed, there has been loss of life in recent months, and it happens far too often. Please consider placing these schools where it can be justified through the surrounding population. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
I want to thank everybody for their comments, and I'm sure the board listened to everyone. I've got a couple of comments I want to make, and then I'll turn it over to the superintendent The very first speaker, Mr. Phillips, said something that was false but personal to me. He said, "My son-in-law had a contract with the school district." That is totally false. He's never had a contract. He works for several, he has done work for several construction companies, and one of them had the contract for Franklin Park, and they asked him to do the demolition. But he was never approved, and I had no, and no one on the board had any say in that. That was totally up between the contractor. The other thing that I would like to mention was forensic audits. This school is audited by three different entities. The state audits us every year. Every third year, they do a full financial audit. We have an internal auditor that on the years that the state does not do a financial audit, they do it. And then we have an external auditor who audits finance, but also audits all the different operations, from HR and to cybersecurity to all, all areas of our district. So we, we are audited. I am all for audits if there is a specific reason to look into something, and that's what these audits usually do. If they find something, they dig down into it. On the access form, the very first choice says a parent can give their child access to every book, even if it's been challenged and put back on there, except for age-restricted books, which was even before the access form. There are certain books at certain ages, children, students are not allowed to check out. There is another one that says they can check out books except books that have been challenged. And then the third option for the public to know is, "My child can't check out any books." So a parent has a choice. We cannot keep a child from checking out a challenged book that has been put back on the shelf if the parent chooses the first one. That is the access form. And I think I'll just go ahead and, oh, I did want to say one other thing. We have had three schools that we built out of, I believe it was Kmart's. And so we, we do look for options like that to save money whenever possible. So that's, that's also another thing. Just wanted to clear up a couple of things. Mr. Superintendent, did you have any comments?
Just a couple, Mr. Chair. Let's start by talking, since you left off there, let's talk a little bit about the capital plan. The capital plan was presented to the board last week as a draft plan in order to ensure that both the board and the public could understand what the growth in Lee County looks like over the next 10 years. With the additional number of seats that need to be provided for our growing student population, we are looking at the possible need for 16 more schools needing to be built in all of Lee County. The area most heavily impacted would be the east side of town. The other area would be Cape Coral. But there are needs also for us to go in and renovate older school buildings to ensure that we don't forget the students who go to school within what I think you would refer to as Fort Myers proper. Some of those school buildings are aging out, and they desperately need to be addressed so that our students, like the students who go to Franklin Park Elementary, can have a first-class learning environment, just like the surrounding sort of border or the circle that surrounds Fort Myers, as we build more and more new schools as we progress outward. The capital plan, as it was proposed as a plan, not as a pathway to move forward, not approved by the board, but in a workshop to have a very good and deep discussion related to the capital needs, is more than some of the figures I've heard drawn out today. It specifically is about a $6 billion plan. We are not going to have the money, nor will we ask for $6 billion. What we have to do is we have to let our board and our community know what specifically we have as pressing needs moving forward, and then this board, along with our staff, is going to have to make very difficult decisions about where we choose to build and where we don't choose to build. So I don't want anybody to take the numbers that were shared last week as the final say in this. There's still incredible amount of work that still needs to be accomplished as we look towards the 10-year building plan. When it comes to high school NNN, I can't thank the residents of Alva enough for continuing to turn out. You probably know as well as most of the community does, today was supposed to be a date certain to bring it forward. We have delayed it. It is not on tonight's agenda. That is giving my staff additional time to seek what other options might or may be available. We're hearing you. I'm not sure that it won't come forward for Phase One, because Phase One provides the board with some additional information regarding infrastructure, property cost, other construction costs that may be too large or too great for this board to consider. Phase One construction is not the beginning of building a building. It's the beginning of the investigation of the land, looking at what remediations and what other opportunities would, would have to be involved. And if we had to build a whole water plant, we probably would make the recommendation to the board that we think about a different site. That's what Phase One construction means. It's not the beginning of moving dirt and building a building. It's an investigation of the area and then making some determination if this area is viable or not. But I'd like you to understand that I know the board is hearing you, and I wanted to respond that I'm hearing you as well. Transportation changes. These transportations are not, these transportations, changes were not new. In February of last year, the board, at my recommendation, made a decision to enter into what is called the elementary proximity plan. At that time, approximately 5,000 to 6,000 students last year were late to school every day. As a superintendent, that is my job. My job is to ensure that students get to school on time. For the educators in the room, you know exactly what I mean. That means, in some cases, a student never arrived to a first-period class. Whether that class be PE, English, Algebra I, they deserve the opportunity to sit in front of their teacher and receive that education. By trimming 15,000 miles off a day off the elementary runs, we believe we are getting better, and we'll start receiving weekly reports this Friday of our on-time percentages and the number of students who are, are leaving late. We'll continue to provide those updates on a weekly basis to the board because we want to ensure our children get to school on time. If you think about it, that's the job as a superintendent, along with his or her staff, to ensure our children have access to the free and public ed that we promise, and that access is getting to and from school. What I have shared with our nonprofit partners is that as these weeks move forward, we will look for additional opportunities to, number one, get our students to school on time, but also to abide by the law. We have responsibilities in transportation to state law, and we will ensure that we do that. That does not preclude us from providing additional routes to a Q or to a Stars Complex or YMCA or Boys and Girls Club. What it does mean is that my job cannot be door-to-door service for every parent in every daycare. I cannot do that and still get my students to school on time, because if we do that for our elementary aged children, what transpires during the morning and the afternoon is my middle schoolers arrive somewhere between 50 to 75 minutes late for their school day. Again, the primary responsibility of me as a superintendent, and I'm sure which my board holds me accountable for, is to ensure our students have access to their school, to their curriculum, and their teachers. We are going to have to look at different business models in our community as we grow beyond a 45, 50, 60,000-seat system, and we start to nip at 100,000, 120, 150, and potentially even 200,000 students in this community by the time this community is built out. We have to start planning for our future, and we can't continue door-to-door service because our students are not getting door-to-door service in terms of their ability to get to school. One of the other things I'd like to think about and think is worth saying to people because some people raise the aspect of, "Let's get back to learning." I also point back to last week's workshop where we specifically spent an inordinate and great amount of time exactly where we should spend our time. should spend our time, talking about education, talking about the measurement of our students' performance, looking at other key performance indicators, and a scorecard that will be publicly available for you, not only to judge your school system, but your superintendent and the work of this board. As for our teachers, we are asked to support our teachers. One of the difficulties was mentioned by one of our teachers, and for me going too far tonight, and that is that bargaining did open yesterday. So I have to be careful, and so does the board, regarding having too much conversation in the public regarding what is a bargaining session between the teachers' union and our administrative staff, and our Spalk Union, our great support professionals, and our administrative staff. The board has provided bargaining authority to that administrative team to look at all compensation. That will continue to be a priority, as I said at the previous meeting, and will say again today. Teachers, support professionals, administrators, schedule N. We have to do something as a community to better support our teachers, who are working very, very hard in their classroom, and I want you to know have been supported by me and will continue to be supported by me for the foreseeable future. I believe, other than the DOE survey, that was a very specific survey from the DOE. We were unable to change anything about it. We were unable to look into it before we sent, but we were asked to forward it from the Department of Education, and we did so. So if it's confusing, or it didn't make any sense to parents, I apologize for that. But it was not a specific survey from the school district of Lee County. It belonged to the Department of Education. And lastly, regarding Collier County Staffing Services, and I know who made that comment, I don't know specifically what you're speaking about, but I will know how to reach out to that individual, and I will get in touch with them. Lastly, when it comes to books, I've heard everything from retired form to media access form to books, and specifically to a student who spoke to her environment in her classroom. We will take a look into not just any school, but all schools, to ensure that we are not denying access to classroom libraries and to our media centers. That is not the intent of this board and this superintendent. I will assure that our classroom libraries, provided they're appropriate for the grade level that they are intended for, and our media centers remain open to all students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is the approval of action items under the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed in consent is made available to board members seven business days before the board meeting. We're expected to review all material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business? Any?
I have one.
Okay. Ms. Jevon Ali?
Yes, item L1, approval to award ITN number N237460LN, Real Estate Brokerage Services for acquiring, selling, and/or exchanging sites for future schools and support services.
Okay. I'll go down the line. Mr. Fisher, did you have any wish to pull?
No items.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
No, thank you.
And Ms. Morgan?
I have none. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent action items with the exception of the pulled item L1? Ms. Jordan?
I move to approve the agenda items with the exception of L1 as written.
Okay. Second, Ms. Langford Fleming?
My second.
Please record your vote. Motion carries 7-0. We have one pulled item to address. Dr.?
Dr. Brenier first. Is there anybody here?
Dr. Brenier, would you please read your recommendation for the pulled item?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The recommendation is approval to award ITN number N237460LN, Real Estate Brokerage Services for acquiring, selling, and/or exchanging sites for future schools and support services.
Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Brenier's recommendation? Ms. Patrica?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Patrica. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Morgan? Okay, any discussion? Ms. Jevon Ali?
Yes, thank you. I'm the one that pulled this item. My reason for pulling this item was because I had requested the list of all the brokerages that was solicited for this bid. And so I actually requested it last Tuesday, so I did not receive it until this afternoon. And then upon looking at the list, there was over, it's over 1,800 realtors and brokerages, as well as it was mortgage lenders, appraisers, title companies, and someone that I, I'm a realtor by trade, so I was familiar with the list. And even one of the vendors on that list was deceased. So I felt a little uncomfortable with, the list is not an accurate, updated list. And I would, I would want, I would want to have seen a more updated list. So then I decided to make, make a few phone calls for people, some of the people that I didn't even know, and some that I did know, and asked if they received the email and the solicitation. And all of them that I spoke to, which was over six realtors and brokerages, none of them had received the email. And I asked them to look. It would have been around May. I asked them to verify and look, and they said they would have remembered receiving some kind of notification from the school district for a solicitation for a brokerage. So then that caused me to pause. And my concern is that, are we giving everyone opportunity to have a business and do business with the district as any brokerages? And so that's why I pulled this item, and I apologize for it being late, but I received it late in the day as well. So I would have brought this up in an email earlier to get the information, if I had the information. And so that's just kind of where I'm at. I can't support this this evening, because I don't feel like there, I'm going to always side on giving everyone opportunity, and all means all, and I will always fall on that sword in making sure that everyone has an opportunity to be educated, everyone has an opportunity to speak, everyone has an opportunity to apply for, to be a vendor at this district, and that's where I'll stand. Thank you.
Any discussion, other discussion? I had a question for superintendent. How time-sensitive is this consent item?
Considering what we're doing in real property and how the board has asked me to look not only in potentially procuring additional property, but also look to sales, to sell some of our assets, it would be good for us to have someone under contract to do this work. In my one-on-one coming up this week, I'm going to prep you based upon a very intensive meeting I've had with our planning division in terms of both real property acquisitions, sales, and some current municipality discussions related to certain pieces of property that we could lose through other governmental moves or decisions. So I want to make sure we talk about that privately, but I, this is fairly important to the school district if you'd like to continue to move forward.
I just think at this time, that is a pretty extensive list, even if it is not up to date. I am for moving forward and asking the superintendent to update the list for all future.
I can certainly look into the list, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. Of, I've received two emails related to addresses. I was able to confirm with our Director of Finance and who oversees procurement, that both those individuals who say they did not see it were emailed, whether they received it or whether it went into their junk mail. I don't control their filters. They would have received it on May 31, 2023, approximately at 5:00. In one particular case, it was 5:14 PM. We specifically checked the list for those individuals, and they were on the list. I don't know, and nor do we have a way for, to send out a read receipt when you send out 1,800. There were four people who submitted proposals. No bidders that came back and said, we don't want to bid. So there wasn't anybody who said, no, thank you. And we can continue to update the list. I was not aware, and I take Ms. Jevon Ali at her word, related to somebody being deceased. I don't, I mean, I don't know in that particular case till I have the email and can do the depth of the, sort of the looking at that particular case to understand how that, or how that transpired.
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Langford Fleming?
So with the latest news of the very extensive list, it is concerning that only four people put up a bid for this particular item out of the amount of people that were emailed. That is, that is concerning. But I have, I have a couple questions. First of all, TCG is in a five-year contract. How many years through the chair to the super have we already been in contract with that company?
TCG was involved when I first got here, when I first arrived to the school district of Lee County, and I found them not to be under contract. I would have to go back and research as to when their contract expired. But for whatever reason, TCG continued to advise the school district, even though they weren't under contract. When I learned of that, that's why we went out with the ITN to make sure that we were abiding by the rules and regulations related to how the school district should do business. I can get that information for you, Ms. Fleming.
Because, the reason I ask that is, last week in our workshop, we looked at a 10-year plan, and a five-year contract with a, with a commercial company brings us halfway through a 10-year plan with 16 potential pieces of property that we would need to be putting schools on. That seems like an awful lot of time and potential business with this company if we haven't really gone out and researched the best of the best. I don't think any of these companies are national companies, and I apologize for not doing my research, because I, I do know, I am familiar with TCG. I'm not familiar with the others, other than they're from smaller groups after I saw this. But my second question, through the chair to the super, are, are we locked in to only being able to have one realtor? I know the state has more than one group. So are we, as a board, locked in to only being able to use one realtor?
I would have to defer to legal counsel, but I will tell you the philosophy behind having one realtor, and that is, if you have multiples, then you have multiple people out on the street looking at pieces of property and sharing information. One of the reasons why I say I need to go over this in a one-on-one is, as property becomes known as something that the district would like to acquire, it's really important that we have singular and very discreet negotiations about purchasing that property, or we could wind up in a bidding war. So that's why you have one person, in my experience, in two different districts, one person doing that work on behalf of the school district.
Okay.
I would have to ask legal counsel, and I would have to table that potentially, because I don't know that Corus is prepared specifically tonight to answer that question.
Well, thank you for clearing that up. I, I would be open to, if it's not a urgent matter, meaning like, tonight at midnight, I would be open to giving this a two-week window. Like, I don't know, I think I heard Ms. Jevon Ali throw that out there. But those are, those are my questions and thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Morgan, sorry.
So it's really not a two-week window, is it? I mean, basically, you're talking about having to go through the whole process again. So you're not talking about, yeah, it's, yeah, we're talking, what, month?
It could be, I think at a minimum, at least 30 days. It could actually take longer than that to go through the entire process.
Thank you.
Ms. Jevon Ali?
So, Ms. Langford, and to answer your question, you're correct. The commercial realtors or brokerages can, they're, they work very differently than residential. And you can have more than one. In government agencies, they'll have two or more working for them. You can have one agency list something while another one's negotiating for you. Because they may be exclusive. A lot of times, commercial realtors are exclusive, and they have that, or there might be two commercial realtors that have, that's not exclusive. So it just depends on the, the deal with the seller, the deal with the buyer. So, I mean, that was something that I had mentioned to the superintendent. I said, we could still hire Trinity for the one transaction. You can just use them for one transaction. You can use them for multiple transactions. This makes them exclusive for five years, and we're committed. And just for a little history, we didn't have a contract with Trinity, and they had property listed for over five years. And I, I'm going to tell you that I think they were, they were mostly, they never sold anything but one lot in Cape Coral, and also the other property, one other property in Cape Coral. And then they actually were not successful on anything that they had listed to sell. So that causes me to have pause as well, because the items they were, they were procuring on, for the seller, but not for us as sellers. So that, that is an alarming situation for me, because I believe if somebody wants to sell something, that opportunity should not be closed to one contract. So I would be open to more than one contract. Thank you.
I understand the bidding war with looking to buy a piece of property. Looking to sell a piece, I could see where we could list that possibly with multiple entities. But I agree, we should move forward maybe with one to, as far as purchasing, to be our agent.
For five years.
Well.
Couple of pieces in the historical record since I've arrived. We currently have no property for sale, nor have we had any property for sale since I've arrived. We have been holding on to specific pieces of property, and I've had individual conversations with all of you. We had one present, presentation on all the properties that we owned. I do believe one needs to come up for sale. That is a single-home family lot in Cape Coral that I guess was a gift to us. We have really no need for that. However, property doesn't change in value. Property is an investment, and we talked about that specifically until we could get a handle on our growth and what we needed. And while we do need to procure property over the next five years, we already have property that we have, that we can continue to build some of our schools on as we move forward in the capital plan, once we finalize what that looks like. Additionally, you are correct, that if this particular company were to put a piece of property up for sale, specifically the Cape Coral piece, I could get it listed by every MLS agent that has it. It's really the procurement process that I'm most concerned about having a singular vendor who works quietly with people who are sending notions and intimations that they might be interested in selling large tracts of land. That is not easy to come about. It's also not easy to come about in our conversations with developers by using multiple different people. It also then provides, could provide some additional confusion. But I'm here to do the will of the board. I'm here to do the will of the board.
All right. Any other discussion? Before we take our vote, I want to apologize to all the administrators that have just been, I forgot that. I understand. It has totally on me. So we will recognize y'all as soon as we do this vote. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, could I also share something? And I just want, I want to be, I want the community and all of you to be aware why some of our properties are not for sale. Some of our properties are not large enough to build a school building on. But rather than getting rid of that asset, we have taken the opportunity to begin to engage with different community and all of you to be aware why some of our properties are not for sale. Some of our properties are not large enough to build a school building on. But rather than getting rid of that asset, we have taken the opportunity to begin to engage with different developers who are offering potentially, and I've shared this with you, the leaseback of that property in exchange for building workplace housing for the individuals within our community who need it. Teachers, firefighters, policemen, nurses, and the list goes on. It is a unique opportunity to look at some of our smaller parcels that would not be large enough for an elementary school. So before we put anything up for sale, it was part of our strategy to make sure that we looked into these particular organizations who do this type of work, who then would take on the responsibility of building, leasing, collecting rent, because I don't think the school system wants to be in that business. But we would be in the business of leasing our property to them potentially. So I just want the public and the board also to understand why some of the properties are not up for sale, because we've not yet fully explored that potential.
Okay. Thank you. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Jevon Elliott?
Nay.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries 6-1. Dr. Bernier, would you please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that was approved on the consent agenda? And again, I apologize.
Sorry.
No, I understand.
Mr. Chair, I think it's good for them to see how a board works. That's exactly the response you want to get when you say that. If it had been quiet, I would have been in serious trouble. But I do, I do believe it's important for our administrators to see, see this. With your actions tonight, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have provided a number of administrators another opportunity to continue to grow in their career. Scott Nicholas will be joining Estero High School as an assistant principal. Scott?
Christopher Lightfoot will be joining the Accountability Research and Assessment Division as a coordinator for continuous improvement. Angela McNeely will be joining the Curriculum Instruction Innovation and Innovation Elementary as the coordinator for teaching and learning. Michelle Edwards will have the opportunity to be the assistant principal at South Fortmires And Phelan Guadardo will be joining Varsity Lakes as an assistant principal.
Mr. Chair, as I've said in the past, and to the people who are seated now, congratulations on your position. Please understand there's no greater trust, or greater symbol of trust than being appointed as an assistant principal and a leader in the school district. You have great responsibilities. We expect you to carry those out. And I want to thank you for your sacrifice to move forward in your careers, because your hours will be changing. Your principals have smiles on their faces, and they're excited about the opportunity for you to go to work. For those families who are present, thank you for your support as your loved one begins a new journey in their career, under the great tutelage of the principals and the individuals who'll be supervising them. But thank you for the support that you provide them, because I'm sure if they had the opportunity to speak, you would be the first one across their lips to say thank you for all the support you've provided them that have gotten to them, gotten them to this point in their career. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Can they be dismissed?
All right. Next.
Yeah, can they give, can they be dismissed?
Oh, I've kept them here this long. Why not? We just wanted an audience. Thank again.
Did Michelle, did Michelle get called for Sunshine Elementary? I don't think so. She got called. I don't think she got called. But did he call her? I didn't hear her. Michelle Stafford.
Oh, did you?
I don't think he said Michelle Stafford. From Sunshine.
I don't have her on my list.
Say it, say it.
Say it right now. Yeah. Super, did we announce Michelle Stafford's new appointment?
Members of the board, we did not announce Ms. Stafford's new appointment. It is not currently on my list, but I think it's worth recognizing Ms. Stafford for her new role. Congratulations.
Sorry about that. It's good for them to see how the board works, Mr. Super. All right. Next is the Good of the Order. Board members, do you have anything for the Good of the Order? Mr. Fisher?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Real quick, just kind of following up on our briefing conversation regards to meetings. First off, thank you to Dr. Bernier for getting us some further information on that for reference. The other thing is, again, you know, we talked about, obviously, looking at meetings and, you know, length and things like that. Again, it's not, it's not doing less, it's making sure that we're, we're being more efficient. Part of it is still continuing, you know, I want to remind people, is getting out to the schools, going through our schools, getting out to community, one-on-ones, going to chambers of commerce, those things, that's how we get public input. That's a lot, how I get it. I mean, heck, out on the soccer field with my kids, that's one I get. And that's what we'll continue to do. So I just wanted to make sure that was part of our discussion as well. I know that, you know, my fellow board members do a great job of that as well. Besides that, first couple of weeks of school seems like, as I said, things are going very well. I, I know that the principals are really trying their best, the teachers are really doing everything they can right now, and I just want to tell them that I appreciate, you know, the principals, the teachers, the staff, and everyone in the School District of Lee County. Thank you.
Ms. Jevon Elliott.
This is also our comments as well, right?
Yes, yes. Go to the ordering comments.
Okay. Because I don't have anything to go to the order. So just real quick, I just want to congratulate all the new appointments, and they've left, but, including Ms. Stafford. And I just wanted to say real quick that our students are out there in the community, walking to school, walking from the bus stops, walking in the street sometimes. So please be really cautious and be, you know, careful, because I've already heard some students, and we've had issues. And I just really want to make sure student safety, and everybody's remembering now, our students are out there going to school every day, and there's, they're, they're kids, and kids will be kids. So we just want to be real careful with that and cautious, and just a reminder that, to look out for our students that are going to school every day. Also, I just want to, real quick, just say, you know, I ask questions for the public. It's actually public engagement for me. It's educating the public. I get asked questions in the community, and therefore, I bring up questions. It's because I am prepared, and I ask the questions, because it's important for the public to understand the process. And if we skip over a process or exclude the public, then what are we here for? We're here to represent, we're elected to represent our, the people that put us here. And I will always, and will continue to ask the questions, bring public awareness, and I am prepared. And that, just asking questions doesn't mean you're not prepared. The questions really are for the public. And if we exclude the public in questions, again, and their concerns, then we're forgetting why we're here. So I will always do that, and I just want to bring that up, because it's my responsibility as a school board member. It's a fiduciary responsibility and accountability, accountability responsibility, and I will always want to be, I want to be held accountable, and I'm here to hold others accountable, that we're employed, superintendent, for now, as well as our school board attorney and our auditor. So thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. I'm excited to know that we are going to be getting more specific information regarding the cost of infrastructure to NNN. So thank you for that very clear description of what Phase 1 means. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we're a great board because we're seven different people who view things seven different ways. And my view of the work that we do at this table, especially during an action meeting, is it is the work of the board. It is not the work of the public. It's my job as an individual board member to go out into the community, like you indicated, Mr. Fisher, and explain what I do, and explain why I do it, and answer those questions in that forum. So I, I'm kind of piggybacking on what, what you're saying, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher, that was very Massachusetts of me. And again, different views make us a wonderful team, but I believe that's our role here as a board, is to literally do the business, make sure we understand it, and take that knowledge and go out and spread it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I would like to say, well, congratulations to all of those with their new jobs that are, will be starting very soon. Also, I really want to thank the Q for being here, and the parents and the families who have come out to show support. It's, it's tough. I get it. It's in my district, so I really feel it. And we want people to be safe. We want kids to be safe. I also want to thank the teachers who come out here always to share with us. We do hear what you're saying, and we do, we actually do care. And to the young man who got Lucas, for Lucas, I really appreciate the fact that Lucas stood up and spoke about his love for reading and the books. The board is not, it kind of hurt me when he said that we are deciding what they should read. The school board is not, as a school board member, we do not decide what you all read. And I just want to make that perfectly clear, that that is not our jobs to decide what you are going to read. It's not my job. And pretty much that's it. Just, I really thank everyone, and the people from ALFA, just coming out, just everybody coming out and sharing and speaking their words, and allowing us to hear what you all have to say is, is great. So thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
To board member Patrica's point about seven members of the board having seven different gifts and ideas, and what makes us, why I feel like this is going smoothly, I agree with, so far, the first four that have spoken and everything you've said. So thank you, Ms. Jevon Elliott, for bringing up that point when questions are asked. Many times, we as board members are asking those because they've been asked of us. And so we are helping public find the answers that they have asked of us. I also appreciate so much the Quality of Life Center who showed up, but there are many other outside organizations that take care of our precious students before school and definitely after school. And I appreciate what they do in those hours of three-ish till six-ish when parents have to work. So thank you for all of you that, that do that extra, because, you know, it takes an entire army to develop these children. So thank you for that, and I appreciate you coming and speaking. I can't help but say it, Dr. Bernier, but it's Friday Night Lights this week, and I am so excited, because football season's amongst us. And I went to a really incredible, exciting volleyball match last night, so fall sports is underway, and just hoping that all of our athletes are, are safe. And thank you to all of our coaches who spend those countless hours with those students. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
So I just want to point out for the public that we are in the adoption cycle for social studies, and the community nomination, community committee nominations are open, but will close September 1st. So if you're interested in participating in the social studies adoption cycle, this is, this is your opportunity. I'm going, I'm going to ask the board to consider asking the board attorney to provide information to us about what going for a Mill referendum would require, from a statutory point of view. I know when we did the sales tax, we probably started talking about it a good four years before we acted on it, for a variety of reasons. But I think it helps for us to understand, to the extent that, I mean, I'm just, I'm feeling enormous pressure to understand what it would mean for this community and what kind of action we would have to take. So just throwing it out there. And those are my comments. Thank you.
I just want to do a public service advertisement. Blessings in a Backpack is a great organization. It's that time of year again. You know, all the kids get all their supplies in a backpack beginning of the year. We all know that. But then they come to school, and then many of them, because they've been in this program, on Friday, they go, "Do I get my food for the weekend?" Because this program gives them nutritional food, and they fill their backpack full, so they can come back Monday morning not being hungry. And I think it's $130 a year feeds, I mean, will feed a child per year in this program. And I made my donation today. So I hope you all would look into that. It's Blessings in a Backpack, Southwest Florida chapter. So that's all I really have for this evening.
Mr. McIntosh, would you like to comment?
I have nothing, but did enjoy sitting here today. It's been a great experience.
Mr. Bernier?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chair, members of the board. With your actions today, you approved Family Healthcare Centers of Southwest Florida. That allows our students to be provided high-quality, accessible preventative dental screenings, utilizing the old McDonald's mobile on-site at various Lee County schools, and mutually, mutually agreed dates and times. This way, students can get, certainly with parental permission, the dental attention and health that they need. Additionally, sometimes people wonder where money goes within our community when people pay certain fees related to traffic infractions. That money moves into the Dory Schlossberg Fund for Driver Safety Education. It was a, the Driver Safety Education Act. And with that money today, you were able to purchase some additional driver's ed cars with training breaks, to ensure that not only our students learn how to drive, but their driver ed teacher has a way of stopping the vehicle as well. I also wanted to just reiterate, I did, I think I know what our, our president of our Substitute Association was talking about, and that was the temporary staffing services that were on J-2. This is not specifically regarding substitutes. This is an opportunity, and I'll give both Mr. Dotick and Ms. McLean kudos to this. They're looking at alternative sources for us to find additional people to be part of our school system. We're currently working with two other districts that have been using, if you will, a temporary service. They've contacted and they've recruited retired teachers. And yes, we can do that, but we can also utilize those individuals and those companies that have already done that. So I think you may see more exploration into what some of our teachers were talking about, in order to show, in order to better ensure that we have certified teachers in every classroom. I think, at this point, I'd like to just remind of all our parents about having very open and frank discussions with their children about what they carry to school every day. We have 16 schools currently working with Open Gate, but before the end of the year, we'll have all of them. I hope that people will take the opportunity to look into their child's backpack and ensure that their child leaves the house in a very safe manner with things that belong at school, and leave the things that don't belong to school or don't belong in the hands of children in their proper locations. Want to communicate, communicate to the community that Connect with Lee is going to open on August 28th. This is our online homework help. Parents can find more information about this currently by looking, looking at Connect with Lee on your student launch pad. The middle school will be available, tutoring will be available Monday through Thursday on school days from 4:30 to 7:30. Elementary schools will be available from 3:30 to 7:30, and high schools will be available from 3:30 to 7:30 PM. Currently, this is staffed by Lee County teachers, and they are being paid for this work, but really an awesome opportunity for our students to get that additional homework help, because if you are like me, helping with Algebra I did not necessarily help. There were lots of tears at my dining room table when I tried to help. Speaking of changes and things that are occurring, tomorrow is August 23rd, which brings us to the 10th day of school. 10th day of school means recalculation for our schools based upon student enrollment. Our Budget Department and Teaching and Learning Division, I'm sorry, Academic Services Division will go into that work and begin to look at how we're doing with enrollment, what's expected, and what changes, if any, are necessary. I'd also like to remind people that our assistant principal pool is opening on August 26th. I think it's really exciting to have that opportunity for other people who may have gotten their degree this summer to have the opportunity to join the ranks of being eligible. I am too. I am too excited about football season, very specifically, many of us have been invited to a morning event for the 25th for the ribbon cutting at Fort Myers Field, but then they will be starting their first game on their new field, Sam Sariani Night, that same evening, I believe, we're expected, if you're going to be there around 7:00, with kickoff to be at 7:30. I believe that's all I have, other than to say thank you to the board for the hard work and to the community and to all the staff that's present this evening. Appreciate you turning out as well.
Our next scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, August 30th. It'll be a board workshop at 12:00 p.m. And on Wednesday, September 6th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., and a board special meeting at 5:05 p.m., and a board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:07 p.m.